Right, I see a quorum of council available and we are right at seven o'clock, so I will call our city council meeting to order. Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Council member Gerard?
Yeah.
Council member Huesnick?
Here.
Council member Munson?
Here.
Council member Beistrum?
Here.
Mayor Bain?
Here. I would welcome everybody to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would like to shut off your camera before we do so, you may do so in the bottom left hand of your Zoom tray. And Dan or Karen will display a flag. I pledge allegiance through the flag.
United States of America.
And to the Republic. For which it stands, one nation, under God.
Under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And let the record note that Mara Bain misspoke the pledge, I apologize. Goodness, um. Council members, we have an agenda before you this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd make a motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Council member Gerard?
Aye.
Council member Huesnick?
Aye.
Council member Munson?
Aye.
Council member Beistrum?
Aye.
Mayor Bain?
Aye, agenda is approved. Our next item on the agenda this evening is open forum. Karen or Dan, do we have any open forum, either participants or submissions this evening?
I don't have any submissions and it doesn't look like there's any attendees, so no.
Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda item or consent agenda. We have items A through F for council consideration.
Madam Mayor, could, I'd like to request that we pull item 6B from the consent agenda, but make a motion to approve item 6A and items 6C through F.
There is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, Karen, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Council member Gerard?
Aye.
Council member Huesnick?
Aye.
Council member Munson?
Aye.
Member Beistrum?
Aye.
Mayor Bain?
Aye, consent agenda is approved. Next item is item 6B, the minutes from October 12th, regular council meeting. Council member Munson?
I think she wants to abstain probably. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the October 12th regular council meeting.
I'll second.
The motion and a second, Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Council member Gerard?
Aye.
Council member Huesnick?
Aye.
Council member Munson?
Epstein.
Council member Beistrum?
Aye.
Mayor Bain?
Aye, motion approved. Next item is item 7A, which is Resolution 1026201, Pond Maintenance Project. And Dave, are you taking us through this?
Again.
Ryan, perfect, thank you.
Mayor City Council, within your packet are the quote results for the Pond Maintenance Project, P0584, received five quotes. Low quote is much lower than what we had budgeted for the project, so that's very good. Resolution within your packet is recommendation to award to Dunaway Construction in the amount of $36,800. And just the reason this is on the regular agenda is we wanted to be transparents that the city is doing water quality improvement projects. So this pond that we are cleaning is one of the original ponds down in the whole Headwaters developments. Even took the Timber Wolf, the Timber Hollows and the Timber Bluffs development to the north drainage in here. So relatively, one of our larger storm sewer pipes that comes into this pond is 30 some inch and eventually discharges into JD4 where we're doing the regional study right now. So high importance pond that's been in service for all the development that south area. So obviously be a great improvement at a much lower cost than we budgeted for. So with that, it's a recommendation to award to Dunaway Construction in the amount of $36,800.
Thank you, Ryan. Quick question, since this is a much lower cost than what was budgeted, what happens with those excess funds or what's, what's our next opportunity for that? So I know we've got no shortage of pond projects.
So we kind of go, depending on what Dave has for maintenance, planned maintenance or unplanned maintenance is where we determine when we will go out for these bids in the winter. This was something that we already talked about, wouldn't make sense to try to go for another one now. We'll prioritize and see where budget lies next year and either add two ponds to the project if budget allows, or go for several small ones and maybe three or something like that. So just depending on where budget is at the time, we want to go off these projects. We'll make the determination on what size or how many ponds Public Works wants us to include in a quote package. So the reason we go out this time of year is these, this, these types of projects are completed during the winter when the ground's frozen, so one, we disturb less while we're doing an access in these locations. And secondly, that allows a lot, much variety, can't talk to me, much wider variety of equipments to get into there instead of a specialized contractor coming out of the metro that, you know, needs. Here, here's the perfect case right here, your, your low bid is a local guy, one, one crew. So, you know, allows for more competitive bids like that, so.
Just a little bit of additional background, so, because we've got some agenda time this evening. Um, his, is, Council member Huesnick will recall, a couple of years ago, we did a pond evaluation study because we did not have maintenance plans for ponds. Can we just kind of step back and provide council some of that background and where we've been? Because it's high end pending historically, we haven't done much pond maintenance and this is, this is a new function for us.
This will, this will be the city's second awarded pond actual project through, through this process. Uh, we've cleaned some outlets and inlets here and there and stuff like that, but actual, a majority of a pond. So how we got this and determined what ponds are the priority is we went through a kayak and did a biometric measurements, so basically sonar bouncing off instruments in a kayak down to the bottom to determine what levels of sediment were in those ponds as compared to the original grading plans. So we know where the sediment that needs to be removed in these ponds. Uh, and then we've also tested the sediment to know whether it has to be landfilled or it can just be daily land or fill. So we've gone through all that and prioritized all that stuff. And then, you know, here, we're able then to start prioritizing the ponds and bid in or quartered them out depending on what level of dollar amount we're talking. So that's the process and what, how we got to there to this point. And, you know, we know which ones kind of generally we want to target, you know, next several years too. So we're not just guessing.
And where do those fund, and can you kind of talk us through where those, what that, what the funding source is for these types of projects and, and work, you know, in budget season and just evaluation of each of those project needs?
So the funds generated to complete these works are coming through in the Stormwater Surface Fund that we collect from all the properties within the city. You know, that fund does these projects, it does some of your water quality projects you're doing with the watershed districts, your street sweeping enhancements. Uh, and then just, you know, day-to-day maintenance where we got a lot of failed culverts, whether it's in the city or the township, you know, all through the city of Public Works is replacing old CMP corrugated metal pipe culverts that just anywhere from 15 to 25 years, they'll rust out and have to replace. Typically, we'll replace those with concretes, RCP, so reinforced concrete pipe nowadays because they last much longer and they can have less coverage on them if, in areas that, you know, more strength is an issue too, so. And they just don't move around a lot in some of the poorer soils that we have out in the township areas or in the areas where there's high water table and stuff like that. So that's what, you know, there's a number of other things too. I know it's listed on the city's website with the Stormwater Surface Fund finances, but right here's a specific project, how we're going to basically put the original volume back to the pond, which is going to help storage during large rain events too, so. And then also the removal of the sediment in the pond is going to, you know, provide for some water quality discharge in as well. So number of benefits just with this small project here. Uh, and then just all the other stuff that there's Stormwater Surface Water Management Fund finances.
Thank you, Ryan. Council members, other questions?
I, I have an out of curiosity question. I noted the line item mobilization on Dunaway Construction's bid is considerably less. Can you explain to me what mobilization is and why that might be, there might be such a difference from one contractor to the next?
Well, council member, do you like to get paid before you do the work or after you do the work? That's where a lot of people await this line item specifically. Uh, some of our federal contracts, we have a, in contracts and specs where it has to be within a certain percent of the overall bid because they'll front load this so much. Basically, this, you'll see this in guys that, especially in the beginning of the season, they'll load this up because they need some money to get things going, pay for fuel and stuff like that. Or at the end of the season, you might see it, you know, such a wide variety because somebody's already so busy and the only reason, way they're going to get this project done and be competitive, I think, is if they, they went on maybe just this line item alone to pay overtime fees for their employees. You know, it's, Dunaway is always typically low on your mob and traffic control because the bit there, they got one crew and they're local. I didn't really look at that, you know, I was just more concerned about right away our overall budget, but. And I know Peterson Company's just got another job that's, uh, we're starting potentially next week. So, you know, they don't have crews that are available, so that was probably why you see some higher there.
Okay.
Sun Ram, Sun Ram, they're coming from some distance. New Look has certainly got a lot of mend out work right now and they're coming from some distance. Dresto Contracting has both of their crews in Marina St. Croix right now, so. And that's, that's easiest way to explain it, but you'll see these vary all over the board. Sometimes it provides as a nightmare is, especially in a federal contractor contract, if we had it tied in the contracts where their mob cannot exceed a certain percent of the base bid. And you gotta go back and argue that, then the city attorney gets involved and it's just not fun either. So that's why we always have, we do point that stuff out when that is a requirement of the contract. That this case it wasn't and didn't need to be.
Any other questions for Ryan? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we adopt Resolution 10-26-20-01, the resolution awarding the contract for Pond Maintenance Project, P as in Peter, 0681 to Dunaway Construction with a total, with a, excuse me, a net total base quote in the amount of $36,800, authorizing the mayor and a city administrator or city clerk to sign said contract.
I'll second. A motion and a second from council member Munson, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Council member Gerard?
Aye.
Council member Huesnick?
Aye.
Council member Munson?
Aye.
Council member Beistrum?
Aye.
Mayor Bain?
Aye, and motion approved. That ends our regular agenda this evening. We did not have any discussion items for this evening and so we will move right into staff updates. Let's start with Patrick and then go to Dan.
Yes, I just have a few things. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank Representative Detmer particularly and Houseley for the bonding bill where we got the $1.7 million for sewer projects. They, Representative Detmer worked real hard to get that in the bill at the last minute, so we were, we were really happy that he did that, so we appreciate that. Uh, we met last week with FLAW to talk to the FLAW Board about the new field policy. Uh, it seemed to go over fairly well. Um, we still have to figure out the fee schedule, so they're awaiting that to, to really react to that, whether it's a good thing or a bad thing for them, but I think it's a good thing for the city and it'll be a good thing for everyone else. Um, we met with the golf course to wrap up the season and start to talk about next season and also start talking about the, the new building that we're putting up, so that's, that's on its way. Uh, we actually started to break ground today on that. And finally, Jamie and I have been working, trying to get the senior center for next year, where we're going to go with that, how that's going to work and what the city's responsibility is. So sooner or later, we'll have some information on that and bring it back to the council. So I got questions from the council if necessary.
Very good, thank you, Patrick. I would just extend work on the bonding bill appreciation to all of staff members that helped put that program together, so great to see it come into fruition, nice work.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Patrick this evening? All right, we'll move on to Dan and we'll do Chief Peterson after Dan.
Members of the council, I just have an update on the CARES Act grant program. Um, I just emailed everyone the list of the approved applications for the for-profit grants. What happened tonight, the EDA approved the for-profit grant applications. There are some funds remaining and those remaining funds will be used to process the nonprofit applications. And then, and those nonprofits will be brought back on November 9th to the EDA for final approval there. Anticipate, we will fully spend all $300,000 that was allocated to the program. Have got a nice mix of businesses that are on the for-profit list and we also are going to be able to approve some nonprofits. So overall, got a wide variety of applicants approved, both for-profit and the program. So that's, that's good to see. Um, have one other update on council chambers, tyranny was out last week. That work has been fully completed, so now chambers is ready to go. So if we ever get in a situation where we start doing the blended in-person and remote meetings, council chambers is now able to handle that from the fact that I'll be here. So I'm just going to give that just a quick meeting test with Paul from LATV to make sure that our streaming computer hooks up to it, but it sounds like we'll be able to do in-person and remote meetings in this point forward if we, if that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Dan, I don't know if this question is for you or if it's for Peter. Um, if, if council wanted to start doing blended meetings, do we need to change our rules of procedure to allow us to do that? Um, or are we able in our, and maybe this is a look it up and get back to us, um, is that, is there any action that council needs to take to move into a hybrid model? Um, and when I say hybrid, I mean some of us in person, if we choose to be in person or remote, if you choose to be remote. Um, and I ask, I guess, both for council as well as for our commissions. I know in particular, planning commission, well, planning commission and EDA have both expressed an interest in having at least a hybrid option. Um, and I don't know if that's, now that we have the technology squared away, I don't know if we're ready to do that or if there is anything we need to do from a rules of procedure standpoint.
Your Honor, members of council, I'm scanning quickly your policies as, as you asked the question. I can give you a definitive answer in the future, but certainly you can move into that forum and that may simply be consensus of council. I don't know that you need to change your policy in order to do that. The open meeting law specifically allows for that sort of televised participation as long as members of the public can be where the council members are. Uh, and if that's what you're talking about, then this is relatively straightforward.
If we were to move into that type of arrangement, then dialing in from home is no longer an option, is that right? If, because presumably, members of the public don't really want to sit in my living room, they're welcome to, but probably not their preferred place. Um, and so does that mean that we take that option off the table and that a remote participant would have to be in maybe a conference room at city center? If they didn't, weren't in the same room, I could use some more granularity on what that looks like.
Certainly, Your Honor, in terms of participation in the meeting, there's a different set of rules for members of the public participating and members of council. For members of council, you must be in a public place where other people can, members of the public can be with you as soon as we leave the emergency footing where, uh, Your Honor, the mayor, Patrick or myself have made a determination that it's not feasible or prudent because of the pandemic to be there. Uh, as soon as that goes away, council members have to be accessible to the public when they're participating in the meeting with two exceptions. They can be absent and participate remotely up to three times in a year. Uh, and beyond that, they would need a medical excuse, like from a doctor that, because they have the, uh, they're under quarantine or whatever, but otherwise up to participating, that sort of thing. So that's a, that's a sort of as needed thing, not a, not a policy thing. Uh, but if you set up the chambers at city hall where some council members are in chambers, others are in a conference room, uh, and you're all connected, allowing you to, you know, spread out your footprint, as it were, to create more space, the open meeting law would allow that. Uh, you can be in different rooms as long as you can see and hear each other and members of the public can be in the same space as the council members.
And, um, maybe I'm dense, um, but, so let me ask, so a scenario question. So let's say our next meeting, if there were a couple of council members who wanted to be in council chambers and a couple of council members who wanted to be home, as I understand it, that's not an option, is that, is that right? That either we're all in a public place or we're all remote?
Your Honor, under the current sort of emergency footing that we're on, the council member or council members, a couple of them could be in, in chamber along with a staff member um, as long as they are maintaining the social distancing and other guidelines that are in place at city hall.
And we could also have council members at home as long as we're still under the emergency orders?
Uh, it's specifically, yes, it's specifically a function of the determination that it's not prudent or safe to resume normal meetings in chambers because of the pandemic.
The, so just throwing questions out and we can get into this as maybe council members are giving updates. Um, I appreciate that there are, there are council members who may be wishing to be in person and there are also commissioners that are wishing to be in person, but I don't think we're in a situation where that's universal. And so I think, and I would like to, if somebody is most comfortable serving and if we, the law allows for them to serve from home, I'd like to preserve that function as long as possible. Because I, I think there are, you know, for, for very good reasons, we're in a pandemic and some people just, you know, would have a, you know, different definition of their comfort level. Um, I'd like to preserve that option as long as, as long as possible, but also recognizing that there are others that rather be in person and socially distanced and six feet apart up on the dais and so just trying to find the, um, the, the best, I guess, the best solution. So I guess maybe council members think about, think about it and I'm open to feedback as part of council feedback or, and then also, um, you know, feedback that you may want to provide to Dan and Patrick on how we proceed.
And just if I may, just from a technology standpoint, as that goes forward, just if we, if I need to make any adjustments to it. So while the, the audio equipment has been adjusted, it has not been tested with Zoomy. I, I have assurances that it'll work, but I just need to go through and get all those, those Ts crossed and Is dotted to make sure all that technology will work seamlessly with our existing system. Um, but if we're doing a, you know, potentially of doing a conference room layout, you know, I would just need to make sure I get the equipment where it needs to be in advance of the meeting. So during that meeting, I can make sure everybody's able to connect in on the network, that all the computers are there, you know, thankfully, we do have a lot of new hardware here to accomplish that. I just need to know where those resources need to be allocated, the advances and making sure that they're ready to go in.
Thank you for the additional information. I am considerate, I, I appreciate some, you know, of our, especially on commission side, the desire to get back together in person. I just, it's a domino effect, if we're back, staff's back and if staff's back, community members are back and you get to the spot where it becomes more and more challenging to be socially distant and, you know, clearly this current format is the safest. Um, and so breaking from that, I guess, I don't, I don't, I don't take that decision lightly. So something that, something for us all, I guess, to think about and provide feedback on preference um, as we think about the next couple of weeks as, you know, technology has given us some different actions. Thank you, Dan. Um, let's move on to actually other comments or questions specific to that topic before we move on. All right, Chief Peterson and then we'll do Chief Newman afterwards.
Yeah, Mayor and city council members, good evening. The only item I have for you tonight is with the snow and freezing rain giving us the past few weeks. I want to remind everyone to drive carefully. Good news is it looks like we're going to have some warmer weather coming back in the next week or two, but winter is right around the corner, so I just want to make sure I advise everybody to, to drive carefully out there. Uh, I have nothing further for you this evening, do you have any questions for me?
State chief, um, topic came up again as part of the downtown community around traffic in downtown and specifically traffic on the north end of downtown. I know we've talked about putting the speed trailer out when it's safe to do so. Um, and sometimes, and I, I don't know when the last time we did that in downtown was, but, um, no need to get back to us right now, but be good to just be able to provide that EDA group, um, any speed information that we have, um, and plans to use that trailer in the future. Cause again, it's, it, it keeps coming up and if we, if we've already done three, you know, speed studies in the last, you know, X number of months, no need to do it again, but if there's opportunity to do another one, um, I think there's some appetite for information.
Yeah, we have the speed trailer out quite a bit the last couple of months and right before the snow hit, we tucked it away. If it does warm up enough and the weather cooperates, we can definitely put it out again. But I do know it was on the north end of 61, between Highway 8 and downtown at least for a week or two there. So we probably do have some statistics that I could download and get those for you.
I think even just getting that information to that downtown group would be helpful. If nothing else, just some education around the type of data that you're able to collect. Um, and then obviously the results of this most recent round would be helpful and we can go from there.
Okay, I'll do that this week and get it out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Chief Newman and then we'll go to Peter afterwards.
Mayor and council, I have no updates unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for Chief Newman this evening? All right, well, Peter, and then we'll go to Ryan after Peter.
Your Honor, council members, I have no update this evening, happy to take questions if you have any.
Any questions for Peter? Seeing none, Ryan, and then we'll do Dave after Ryan.
Mayor City Council, uh, just giving some feedback on, there's a lot of conversations going on, on development work right now in the city, so I would anticipate some of those going to be coming forth and applications here at some time, so, uh, that's positive. You know, I think they're just kind of sat forever, so time, time is shifting a little bit. So there's a, also a lot of activity within other communities and Forest Lake on cellphone upgrades. So, you know, we just currently finished one with Verizon, now T-Mobile's hot, hot, just got approval today to do some upgrades again, so. A lot of stuff there in technology that's being done on the backend, things you guys don't typically hear or see about. Uh, and also within the bonding bill, there's some other opportunities that I'll start exploring with Pat Wednesday at her staff meeting that I think we'll want to pursue. Um, so that's all I got for now, just open up with any questions you might have.
Great, any questions for Ryan? Council member Gerard?
I'll ask Kathy's question, any update at 97 in Hornsby there?
Yeah, what did I tell you, Mayor Bain? I'm going to look it up quick.
You, you did tell me an answer, but I.
There was, there was a delay on some equipment that they need to get that signal operational, but they do anticipate having it done before the end of the year. That's the long story of it. What specifically, I, I don't know, but they do anticipate having it operational before the end of the year.
It's a little outside of our jurisdiction, but, um, did I hear that the Hy-Vee Convenience Store project was put on hold? Is that, is that an official?
I haven't heard anything.
All right, unofficial, put that in, put that in the unverified. All right, unofficial, put that in, put that in the unverified category. Okay. Um, any other questions for Ryan? We'll go to Dave and Sandy after Dave.
Mayor and council of Noah.
Well, Dave, you cut out. Is anyone else hearing Dave?
No updates for me tonight.
All right. Did I see, Dave, that we got compost hour starting up again on Wednesday?
Correct. Yeah, we closed down for two days and then now we're back, back open with the warm weather. So I'm sure we'll have plenty of leaves coming in there.
Saturday's going to be fifty, so I expect there's going to be a line, right?
Yeah, last, uh, two Saturdays ago, we had four hundred and, almost four hundred and fifty people through on a Saturday. That was the most, most I've ever seen.
Wow. There's a lot of leaves out there still covered in snow at this point.
Is Republic finished now with their yard waste? I can't remember if they already are.
Tell me no, because we've got full bins.
I hope not. My bins are full too. I'm unsure of that. Dave will find out. Let you know.
Thanks. Thank you.
We're putting ours out on Wednesday. We'll let you know if they get picked up. All right.
I think there's at least one more week, if not a couple.
I hope so. All right. Any other questions for Dave? Sandy and Karen after Sandy.
I have no, nothing to add unless anybody has any questions.
Quick preview for council. Sounds like we are, I'm going to use the November workshop time to walk through the tenure financial plan. Is that still, is that still anticipated?
That's still on schedule unless something goes terribly wrong.
Perfect. Well, it's a tenure financial plan. So let's see it in its current state, knowing that it's
And just to mention, I mean, it, it will be a plan. I think it's going to be a long-term discussion, just not one meeting. I think there's going to be some major policy items that the council will have to talk about. Probably into twenty twenty-one before we really get it nailed down.
I sus, I suspect there, that will be multiple rounds of conversation. Excellent. And Karen, I see, I, I, I think you might have put the, did you put this note in the chat window? Do you just want to maybe say that?
Yep, I did. And that was just a concern about, you know, going back into chambers. I know, I know people are anxious to get back in there. There's several on a couple of commissions and the, and that's the statistics as of today. So test rate of the COVID has gone up two point eight percent, but the percentage of cases have gone up significantly. So the number of cases aren't necessarily matching the testing rates. And this was the highest positivity rate last, yesterday on Sunday, was the highest positivity rate that we've had since July. So the number of cases are going up, the death rate's going down. But the testing rate isn't increasing significantly. So just wanted to throw that out there just so we, you know, everybody's aware of that information. The other update is I have all things elections happening. And so I will be in the office full days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Tuesday, until everything's all finished and completed and sent into the county. We have preparations all ready to go for social distancing. We're, we're as prepared as we can be. The county has provided, you know, everything that we need. And so we're as prepared as we can be with that. In the future, I'm looking at hopefully finding a new location so that future elections, we can't do anything about it this year, but future elections that we can get one of the precincts moved out of the city hall and into the precinct that it belongs in. We're actually in precinct five. We have precincts one and two coming into city hall to vote. So try to shift that around and get that back where it belongs. I'm also gearing up for all things licensing. So business licenses will be sent out to anyone who holds a business license. Massage, pawn, liquor license, tobacco license, those packets will be sent out shortly, within the next week or two, as soon as I can get those out. So we'll be looking for all of those. For anybody that is running a business that can check in the mail. If not, they can certainly give me a call. And I think that's about it for updates. If there's any questions, I can answer those.
Any questions for Karen? So reminder, in-person voting is still taking place at Washington County Service Center weekdays, and then this Saturday is the Saturday voting hours. They also accommodate Monday before election day and all of those hours are on, are linked on the Forest Lake site and also on the Washington County election site. And then the only time City Hall is used is actually on election day. So just a couple.
Thank you. I was going to mention that too. Yeah. So there's some signs out there that are directing people to come to City Hall to vote early. And we do not have early voting at City Hall. The only voting that we have is actually on election day. Everybody can go to the Washington County Government Center where the library is. There's early voting there. But there is no early voting at City Hall, just on election day.
Thank you for clarifying that. All right, let's move on to council updates. I think I picked up all of our, all staff members here. Let's move on to council updates. Let's start with council member Husnick and then we'll go to council member Beistrum.
Thank you, Mayor Bain. I attended the EDA meeting tonight. And Dan did a great job of explaining exactly what we did there. So I'm not going to beat that horse again. And, and other than that, I don't have any other updates. So thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Beistrum, we'll do Councilmember Munson next.
Um, I attended the YMCA board meeting. Still trying to figure out the COVID world with the YMCA and their outreach to community. But one event that's notable, notable is a food distribution event from eleven AM to two PM this Saturday at the Forest Lake High School. It'll be contactless, pop your trunk and a thirty-pound box of food will be put in the trunk. It's open to anybody in the community. I'm not sure if Dan, you're aware of that, or maybe we can get something up on the, on the LED board outside city hall there. That, that would be great. Also attended the last session of Everyone Belongs, some wonderful, robust discussion there. The participation continues to be, it continues to astound me. There were approximately fifty, fifty community members present, school district or community members present. And that seems to be, you know, that seems to be pretty consistent. I mean, nobody's dropping out and, and I think there's some interest in bringing some new folks in to the fold a little bit. And then attended the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission on the heels of our workshop. They continued to have some conversation about the tenure plan, next steps, among other things such as park fees and whether or not they were opening their ice rinks and warming houses this year. And there's some consensus that they really want to do that and continue to get people outside and coming together in a safe way. So it sounds like, uh, sounds like that's going to move forward. And I just want to echo Mayor Bain's thanks to city staff for their work on that bonding bill and, and really kind of not taking, taking no for an answer right up to the eleventh hour. So we appreciate that. I, you know, we're going to be able to get some great work done with that. So thanks.
Excellent. Councilmember Munson.
The only thing I have, I attended the FLA meeting last week that Administrator Casey talked about. Just want to say thank you to him for taking the time to, to come to that meeting and explain since proposed, excuse me, proposed changes. And I think I would agree. I think it went well. They're waiting to hear what the fees are, but I did hear both Al and Paul of FLA express that it was a good idea moving forward. So we'll see. But I thought it was, I thought it was great. And I thought it was great that the city staff took the time to come and explain. So that's it.
Excellent. Agreed. Councilmember Gerard.
I attended a planning commission meeting. The only issue was a sign that the apartment's right at Eleventh and Fourth there. They want to change their signs and as Councilman Husnick can confirm, signs are probably the most painful thing the planning commission deals with. And spends just about as many hours on a sign plan as you do on a whole development. So it's always been ugly and this one is no less than that. So that was about the only thing. This Wednesday, they got a full agenda, so it'll, it'll be interesting.
I guess Councilmember Gerard just said, and I note that may impact planning commission. I was, I had a community group that is active on the Next Door app, reach out to me and ask about questions related to what we are doing as a city to preserve dark skies. And they really just were looking for some basic information around lighting plans and what do we do around light ordinances? I sent them in the direction of our ordinances and, you know, kind of gave them some information around our process and certainly, you know, let them know that, you know, planning commission has, you know, you're kind of the first, the first line of review for those types of things. But just heads up, the, the question came up and I had not heard of a dark skies group and that not heard of. And no, it's a thing. I didn't realize it was an active group here in Forest Lake. And so just heads up in case some further inquiry might come, might come.
You know, there is for commercial development, there is a lighting plan required. And that is, you know, you basically got to be close to zero at the lot line. It's very low levels in residential. Ryan may be able to speak to this better, but I don't think most are lit with streetlights. So I don't think it's a huge ordeal, but I don't know that for sure. But all of the commercial developments, I have to submit a lighting plan. We have a full review of that. The planning commission looks at that also.
Correct. Thank you. Um, quick, up, a quick update for me. I also have planned, I attended the Everyone Belongs session host, co-hosted by City of Forest Lake, YMCA and the Forest Lake Area Schools. Also, it's just great, great attendance on those sessions. There are a number of sessions remaining. So staff and council members, if you want to attend those, those sessions are available. There is a Facebook event out there that has them that the school district has promoted. Or just contact me and I can help kind of direct you on registration for those. Happy to add additional attendees. And also just reminder to this group that there, that work plan is expected to be developed by the end of the year. It should be a great document for us to kind of consider on next steps as it relates specifically to Human Rights Commission and what else we might want to do with that Human Rights Commission. Also attended both the EDA meeting and there was a downtown committee meeting right after it today. We are working towards the downtown group having a developed work plan. We did, we have done a SWOT analysis. We did the outline for a plan and kind of some prioritization today. We gave feedback to Dan. Dan will be working on putting that together. Once we have that plan drafted, it's a good opportunity for us to do some additional outreach for those that have already been involved in the process, but then also some of those that aren't at the table. Just to get some feedback and then also to make sure that we've given folks an opportunity to engage on topics that are important to them. Recognizing not everybody's going to care about every single topic on that work plan, but there are certainly community members concerned about, you know, retail options or infrastructure development or parking. And so giving some opportunity for folks to engage on the topics that are important to them. And we should have a document to facilitate that here coming up towards the end of November. So keep that in mind and we'll certainly get that circulated out to council. So you're able to distribute in your networks as well. And we're getting that group as robust as possible to get the right level of input and working going forward. That is the end of the up, up, that's the last of the updates I have. And that is the end of our agenda. So Karen, go ahead. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Mayor. During discussions, I emailed Republic Services, my contact there, and she got back to me right away and she said that the yard waste normally goes until November thirtieth, unless their operations department runs into any issues or problems. Usually it's because of weather issues. But she said through November thirtieth, if they have problems or need to stop, they will notify me. There are, somebody from their operation department will email me and I can put that information out on the website if it happens. But otherwise, November thirtieth is the date.
Kudos on the after-hours response. That's excellent. Thank you. All right. No further updates and nothing further on our agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Hi.
Councilmember Husnick.
Hi.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
I were adjourned this evening. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Have a good night.